You're watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 8th meeting of the LaPorte County Election Board's special meeting. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
I call this meeting to order, LaPorte County Election Board, March 8th, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call. Heather Stevens.
Present.
Teresa Massa.
Present on this International Women's Day.
Witness.
Happy International Women's Day.
Same to you.
And Brody Schaffner, I am present. Are there any corrections to the agenda?
I have a couple down here where it says vote center dates. I think I'd like to add the early voting dates, times, I'd like to discuss those as well.
So, there's a motion to amend, to include vote center, early, early vote center dates or locations?
Both.
Okay. As number four?
Sure.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Early vote center locations and dates. But any, any other corrections to the agenda?
Not that I saw.
Okay. Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes and approve those?
I'll second. I would say, I know that these are super long, so if you guys do see anything, I'm, I'm always happy to, to revisit. Or we can table these minutes until you've had time to go over them.
Sure. I would prefer that.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are tabled. Time for public comment? Hearing none. We will move on to old business. Recertification of candidates.
So, the last time that we were here, we, we were unsure as to whether or not Mr. Merzinski would appeal. He did, so therefore our ballot has been at a standstill until yesterday. It was late yesterday afternoon when I was able to reach out to, to microvote for them to make this change, and they have not had the time to do it yet. So, the ballot is correct, other than Mr. Merzinski is, is still on it currently, but he will be removed.
Okay.
Pursuant to the court's order yesterday, we should probably.
Yes.
Say for the record.
Yeah.
In his appeal.
Yeah.
Of our decision.
Do we have that? Let me get the cause number.
I do not have that.
I'm gonna look it up real quick. How do you spell his last name?
M R O C I N S K I.
Alright, and that, that cause number is forty-six, C O one, twenty-four, O two, P L four, four, five.
President, I have a request.
Yes.
Now that there are two members of the public, can we reopen the public comment section of our agenda?
Certainly. Would you have any objection to doing that after old business?
Not at all.
Okay. I will do that.
Thank you.
So, should we certify this with the exception of removing?
I would like to.
Okay.
Just so that once our ballot is approved, I can get it printed, and our absentee board can, can begin. Again, I, I always send everything to both party chairs, so i- if they have an issue, you'll be the first to know, because I will, I will contact you immediately. But, yeah, I would like to approve that.
So moved.
Thank you.
I will second that. All in favor of certifying this ballot, with the exception of number sixty-five taking the effect of removing Richard J. Merzinski from the ballot. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous vote? Okay. We're gonna reopen public comment.
Hi, I'm Lynn Lancaster at the Legal Women Voters.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Voting is a fundamental right of American citizen, and it's one of the most important and vital services of our county government, provides for its citizens, not only for the national presidential election, but for the opportunity for citizens to have their voices heard and get involved in community by voting for city, county, state government. It's the county's responsibility to ensure that all citizens of LaPorte can vote without undue hardship. Voting is the primary interaction in the vast majority of our citizens with the county, the second being paying taxes. The county is responsible for providing voting sites for early voting, as well as it on Election Day. To fail to do so is not an option. If the county is unable to provide a county building for early voting, as you've done in the past, then you need to reach out to venues such as City Hall in Michigan City or LaPorte, city and county parks buildings, public libraries, not just abandoned former library buildings, churches, YMCA's, community theaters, P and W, Ivy Tech, any vote center location might also be available for early voting sites, or former precinct polling places. Also, office buildings with unused offices, or community foundation buildings, plus some schools have security entrances and ways to block the public from moving further into the schools near students and staff, which might be able to be used for early voting. Please reach out to all available sites before choosing to limit the number of hours or venues for voting. The county-owned building located in Michigan City at Eighth and Wabash has served as an early voting site in Michigan City for several years. Before that, voting was held in the Superior Courthouse in Michigan City, in a very small room which could only accommodate two to four voting machines. Up until 2023 municipal election, the county building at Eighth Street had a large room for voting along the east side of the building that extended to the far south wall. It could accommodate a dozen or so voting machines. In a recent visit to that building, which houses the county health department, and is, and used to have the county assessor's office, it appeared that a lot of the space was not being utilized, or was being underutilized, with desks spread out across a huge room. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
If I can, I would like to touch on that. So, I, I've been contacting everybody. I, I have talked with, with the mayor of Michigan City, and we did look into using the, the City Hall building. I have contacted the Chamber of Commerce, I've contacted libraries, I have been on that phone. I, and, and the reason that the Eighth Street area for early voting shrunk is because of the flood in this building.
Oh.
So, when they had to move everybody out of this building, so we no longer have, have had early voting right here either. We had to move that out because county employees are utilizing this space. And it's the same thing over on Eighth Street. So, that's what's created the, the issue. So, we, we are working very hard to, to find proper facilities for everyone. You know, it's, it's not fun for, for me to put people in that, in that little tiny area that can only hold a couple of machines, there's no bathroom for them. This is not how I want people working. And then, and then in LaPorte, they ended up with the beautiful State Street church. I mean, it was really, I, I'm glad one didn't see the other. So, we, we are working very hard to get proper facilities. I, I know that, I know that Teresa has, has even jumped in, and she's been great, she's, she's looking as well. So, it, it's nice to know I'm not alone in this search. So, thank you, Teresa. Cause it's, we, we wanna make sure. I, I love the, the Eighth Street location, because that's what everybody's used to. And, and even, you know, the schools, I have no interest in going to the schools, and I'll tell you, it's, the, the schools are the biggest reason that we moved to vote centers. It was to get the voting out of the schools, because it was disruptive, it often involved security in uniform, which can be viewed as voter intimidation. So, we've done everything to, to steer clear of that, but we somehow, some way, there will be early voting in Michigan City. If there's anything we can do to help you, please let us know. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster.
Any other public comment? Nobody on Zoom. Moving on to new business, approval of vote center dates.
Um, the vote center dates, so, the vote center dates will be May 7th from Francine, you just scared me. She was like, no, it is May 7th, right? Am I, am I nuts? Okay. 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 So, that, this is on Primary Election Day, which is May 7th. Our polls will be open, and it's, it's a state requirement, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
So, would you like to make a motion of that effect? Do we have to approve it, or it's just, it's state law and we have to follow it?
It's state law, I mean.
Might as well just approve it.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Number two, approval of vote center locations.
Yes. Taylor's been, I mean, Taylor spends a lot of time on the phone calling at each and every one of these locations. It's, we, nobody said no. So, pretty much the way it works is we call, and they say, yep, we've already got you down, and then they, they say, you know, do you want us to put you down for the fall too? And we say yes.
Okay.
So, there's no changes as of right now. So, I would like to motion to approve the, the locations, so that we can get those printed.
Should I read them?
You're welcome to.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
And then we can have more discussion.
Okay.
Sure. Discussion?
So, I, I guess I'm a little leery to approve in advance when we might have to make changes. We're already discussing changes that we have to make in the early voting site in Michigan City. So, it, it makes sense to me that if we are changing, if we have to change the plan, and we may have to do that, we would just include all of those changes in that vote to change the plan. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but it does mean that we're gonna have to meet again in the next week, because I have a deadline as to when we have to get these published. Well, this isn't, this isn't the crunch. It's the early voting locations that are crunch time.
Exactly. So, so, so I would suggest, it's, it's a little premature, just because she's still working on this.
No, she's, she's contacted everybody.
Okay, so all of the thirty-eight sites?
That's my understanding. All thirty-eight are good to go.
Okay. I misunderstood you, I thought she was still in that process.
No, I, I believe she is finished.
So, all of these are confirmed?
I believe so.
And that's, all of these are the sites listed on page, one of the page nines, under paragraph one. Uh, is that right?
Well, there's different, let me, let me take a look.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at here.
Because there's different, there's different things for municipal elections, and... Is everything really page nine?
Um, there are.
Three pages. Everything is page nine.
Four pages nine. Five pages nine.
Okay. For presidential and midterms. Yes.
Yeah, under number paragraph one.
Yes. And then you turn the page, and there's the rest. Yes.
Okay.
But if you, I mean, we're gonna have to meet again because of the early voting, so I'm happy, I'm happy to wait on this. I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
Just to confirm with her.
That's fine.
That she's contacted everyone.
Absolutely.
Can I have a motion?
Because it's been a crazy week.
Oh, my goodness.
Can I have a motion to table?
I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the approval of vote center locations is tabled. Number three, consideration of Election Board attorney appointment. So, I don't have the statute in front of me, but we're entitled to choose our own attorney.
Yeah, the attorney that was used was, was appointed for us.
By the?
By the.
County attorney.
By the county attorney. Um, I, I don't, we don't work for the commissioners, and I, I would like, and we can, we can work on this, but when I go to budget hearings this year, I would like a line item for the county election board in the budget for legal expenses for the board. And it doesn't mean that, that the board is gonna use that money every year, but it means that it's there if they need it, because that should have been, an attorney should not have been appointed. We should have selected our own.
And we shouldn't have had to scramble to find one last minute.
Correct.
Which we didn't have to, because one was appointed for us, and it turned out.
It, it did turn out, but it could, it could have not.
Exactly.
Especially when, I mean, the...
Part of it was just the, the very short timeline because of the subject matter of the litigation.
Yeah, and I think another part, another part of it was, you know, the county attorney works for the Board of Commissioners, and in this case, it was a, you know, it's a, it's a sitting commissioner who's.
Who was an adverse party to us.
Yes. So, it could have been very messy and very ugly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm glad it wasn't, and I, I was, I was perfectly happy with, with Mr. Willoughby. I, I don't know how you guys felt about that, but.
I thought he did a fine job.
He did indeed. So, for purposes of formalizing our relationship as his clients and other accounting purposes, we need to approve his representing us. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, and we, I mean, we're still in the middle of, there could be more. Um, I don't know if anyone's gonna appeal anything further, so, in my opinion, it's a good idea to ratify him for this purpose at least. I don't know about, I mean, maybe it is premature to appoint him, or designate him as our attorney forever, but for this purpose at least, I think it's a good idea to name him for this appeal, just in case it goes farther.
I agree with that. I think he represented us well.
What are your thoughts?
I agree.
Okay.
So, I would move that we approve the appointment of Christopher Willoughby as our legal representative for the past week, and for this, this continuing matter.
Okay. I will second that.
Is the, is the record clear?
I think so.
I don't have the cause number. Okay.
I read the cause number.
You did.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Okay. Um, number four, early vote center locations and dates.
Yes. Um, we, and we kind of looked at this last year. Last year, I suggested two weeks of early voting, rather than the full twenty-eight days for the municipal election, and I really wish that we had done that, because it was very slow. Um, we could have saved a lot of money. So, but, you know, we always want the opportunity for people to vote, but if they have the two weeks, they're gonna come the two weeks. If they have a month, they still come in the last two weeks. Um, I know that we have a South County early voting location at the Wantata Town Hall. They've been really good to us. Um, I don't think we need a month there.
Well.
I mean, we can do it if, if, if we need to.
In a presidential election year, my inclination is to provide more access rather than less.
And that's fine. That's fine. Um, again, for the prime, if, mine was just the primary, but, I, because I do think it'll be busier in the fall. As for Cool Spring, which has been, that was a vote center in 2020 and in 2022. It wasn't a vote center, it was an early voting location, I'm sorry. Um, that building is, is, I am not comfortable putting people in there for eight hours a day.
Cool Spring?
It's the old Cool Spring Library.
Right, right. Kitty corner from the newer.
Yeah.
That like triangle?
Yeah.
Parcel?
It is empty. Um, it is, it, the inside is not maintained.
Okay.
It's very dirty, it's very dusty, it's very moldy.
Oh, that's bad.
And it was the mold that really, I mean, it triggered allergies, it, for the workers.
Okay.
It, it was rough. Um.
Are they thinking about condemning the building?
I don't know what they're doing with the building.
It sounds not good.
Right. Um, I do have, I have a call-in to the Cool Spring Library, the new one across the way, but will, again, I haven't heard back.
Okay.
So.
So, we need more time.
We do. We do on that. Um.
Could we affirm the dates?
Yeah.
Now, and the locations later?
I think so. The dates, yeah. That starts April 10th or April 9th?
Let, let me just throw an idea out there.
Sure.
If we approve the dates before the locations, the, the people that are responsible for the locations may not be able to comply with the dates we've already chosen.
But, these dates aren't so, I mean, if we're doing the full thirty days, that's when, or the twenty-eight days, that's when it starts.
It has to start April 9th. Yeah.
Yeah.
I see. So, if it's, if it's by statute, then we still have to approve that? Oh, because we have the option of shortening that?
Correct.
Okay. So, forgive me, it's my.
You're fine.
It's my newness. In the past, have we done, for non-municipal elections, have we done early voting sites at more than, for thirty days, at more than two locations in the county? Because we've talked about LaPorte, Michigan City, and Cool Spring, and Wantata was also a thirty-day?
Yep.
That one, I think is critical, because there are so few sites in South County, and we wanna serve those folks.
We do. We do. And, and again, I threw it out there, I, I'm a money saver. I'm, obviously, I want everybody to vote, but I also want to save taxpayer money, and just from seeing 2020, 2022, and even with, even through COVID, I mean, it is the last two weeks that it's busy. Those first two weeks, they sit there. So, we're, we're paying sixteen dollars an hour, and, and there's, there's nothing going on. But I, again, I'm never a fan of taking away the, the access to voting, but I, I do wanna save money wherever we can, because we are on a tight budget. When our budget was set, and I've never changed it, but we did not have a mobile voting unit, the, the budget that we have, which I've now realized, was never intended for the four early voting locations, it was intended for two. So, we, we have all of this extra on top of, when we get more and more absentee by-mail applications, we have to, we have to add more staff to that board. So, we're paying out more and more. So, even though we reduced poll workers, we, we paid them more. So, the budget is tight.
Surely, we can increase it.
I could always go and ask for more.
Yeah.
But.
Are we unlikely to get an increase?
I think so. By, by going to the vote centers, we were supposed to save money.
Okay.
But what was never figured in was what wasn't figured in when they made these changes. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, when I came in, the budget was set, and I'm, I'm one of those, I will work with, I will work within my means. So, what, when that budget was set, it didn't include Wantata early voting, it did not include Cool Spring early voting, and it did not include a mobile voting unit.
All of those things are benefits to the voters.
They are benefits to the voters.
So, why would the county council not?
I'm not saying that they wouldn't.
Okay, okay. I can't imagine a scenario where they would turn that down, because this is, you wanna talk about waste of taxpayer dollars, this is the furthest from a waste.
Yeah. No, I agree. I just always like to save money.
Well, let's talk about timing. When do we, when is the first opportunity we have to present this to the county council?
We could present it this month, and, and we don't have to necessarily, because we still have the November election. So, this budget is for the entire year.
I see.
So, if we do need to go to them, we can do that over the summer, we can do that. I mean, it's not, we're not in a rush at all.
Good to know.
So, if we, you know, blow through a bunch of money trying to provide access to voters for the primary, we can always go over the summer, bug over for more money.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I would, my preference is to keep the month.
Okay.
And provide as much access as possible.
Okay.
This is gonna be, this election's gonna be huge.
Yes.
Huge. So, that's, that's my preference, I don't know how you feel.
I agree completely.
I'm good with that.
I don't wanna start tampering with like dates and shortening them right now, just so that there's no accusations or anything, just put it out there. Maybe somebody's on vacation for three weeks in April, and they can only have that one week, the first week.
I get it.
If it helps one voter, I don't think it's a waste of taxpayer dollars.
I get it.
And we have, over ninety percent of adults in the county are registered to vote. That's fabulous. I know they don't all vote, but we wanna make it easy for them.
I've always said, if you're not voting in LaPorte County, we're gonna make it, it's gotta be because you don't want to.
Yeah.
Not because you can't. So.
Yeah, that's just my preference.
The other thing I wanted to visit, um, our, our early voting hours are Monday through Friday, eight to four, the last two Saturdays before, before the election, eight to three. I would like, one day a week, maybe it's a Wednesday, I would like at least one location open until 8:00 PM.
I agree.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I would say probably LaPorte, because that's the county seat, it's right in the middle. If that is the only time that you have available to vote, get up here.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we need, you know, some part-time people to work just, just Wednesday evenings.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, fine.
I'm totally on board with that.
Okay. I would make that motion to.
Can we clarify what you're making a motion about?
I would make the motion, do we want, do we want one location? I'm, I'm worried about being able to staff it everywhere. That, that would be my one concern, is staffing everywhere.
You're talking about the, the after-hours?
The, yeah, from.
The late hours.
Yeah, the late hours.
Okay.
So, we're, we're gonna vote on all of, all of the dates and times now, right?
Well, for this one specifically, I'm gonna, I would make a motion that LaPorte, on Wednesdays, rather than eight to four, is open eight to eight.
Okay, wherever that LaPorte location is, that has not yet been determined.
Correct. We have something in mind, and it's, it's totally ours for the month, but, correct.
I would love to see Michigan City added to that. Is that a possibility?
Are you gonna help me staff it?
No. I just bark the orders. You, you spend the money. But, I mean, in all seriousness, I mean, is it, is it gonna be feasible?
I think, I think it's worth, I think anything's worth a shot.
Okay. If we can, I would just love that, because, you know, who knows?
Just like open later and stay later? Like, not be eight to eight, but whatever it is, like?
Noon date.
Would you guys prefer that? Would you guys prefer that?
That, that sounds like a good idea.
It's the same amount of hours.
The question was, can we just open later for the, for the recording? That's a great idea. So like Wednesday from twelve to eight, essentially, same amount of hours.
So.
Depending on the location and the sponsor of the location.
Right, right.
Eight to four. Twelve to eight, Thursday, Friday, eight to four. Saturday, the last two Saturdays, eight to three. Okay.
So the last two Saturdays are set in statute, is that right?
Correct. Yeah, we, we are required to be open for seven hours. It doesn't necessarily have to be those seven hours.
Okay, great.
That's what has been done traditionally.
Okay.
It could be changed, but.
So it's working.
Yeah, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to mess with that, so.
Is that your perception that the Saturday hours are working?
Yeah. The first Saturday is slower than that second one, but. And again, I don't think that this primary is gonna be super busy. I'm not worried about having, you know, eight machines in LaPorte or or Michigan City. I think I would love to see, you know, four and three or four and four, whatever. But the the fall is where it's just gonna, it's gonna be crazy.
Yeah.
So I definitely, I I want to prepare for that. I want our workers to prepare for that. And we have to have that, that box on every machine, so I I'm gonna send a couple of extras out this time, just, just to have everybody get used to it.
Okay.
So. So. Did we make a motion on the, on the hours?
No, we're, we're still, I'm still unclear on that.
Okay, so I would make a motion that early voting, when it opens, is then on Mondays and Tuesdays, open from eight to four. On Wednesdays, open from twelve to eight. Thursday and Friday, open eight to four. And those last two Saturdays, open eight to three.
I would second that. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So we got the times.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we want to do dates or we want to wait?
Well, the dates are kind of set in statute. If we're going the, if we're going the full time, then that opens on.
April ninth.
April ninth, thank you.
Until.
May sixth.
Until May sixth at noon. May sixth at noon, everything ends.
Okay. Uh, just so we can keep a clear record, I'd love to do a motion to that effect that the dates for early voting be April ninth, what time? What time, April ninth?
Eight AM.
Eight AM. Uh, through May sixth at noon. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, unanimous.
Can't write this fast.
Okay, so regarding locations, is it my understanding that the board wants to table that?
I do. I I do want to say that Nate Laux has been very, very good to, not only this board, but the whole county. Um, so when we lost the use of this room here, he offered up the State Street Church. And this time when I, you know, I did reach out again and, and he said, he, yikes, it's not available. But I do have this, and he has offered, the building is at two ten Brighton Street in LaPorte. Um, he said it is newly renovated. Um, it's ADA compliant. It's, it's got a, you know, it's got a kitchen for the staff. It's, I mean, it's, it is ready to go. Plenty of parking. Um, so it sounds like a fantastic location. I, I have reached out, I've talked, you know, I've, with an email. The county attorney is aware. Uh, all three commissioners were copied on that email. So I'm hoping that they can get together, they can, we can get a contract figured out once they walk through it. So I really just wanted this board's approval before I even went any farther with it, so. Because again, I can't, I can't talk to you guys about this outside of these meetings, so just so that you guys were good with it.
With two ten Brighton Street?
Yes.
So you're, if I understand your motion correctly, it's to explore the possibility of that being a location.
Well, yeah, I just, I basically, I don't even, I don't even need a formal vote. I just want to know that the two of you are, you know, are are agreeable to move, I mean, it's clearly not going to be at, at the, at the State Street Church.
Okay, so again, the, the, the state law provides that if we amend the plan, which is already in place.
And we're gonna have to.
We have to have a formal vote that's unanimous by all three of us.
Yes.
So I, I think we need to thank you for your hard work in finding this place, and it sounds very agreeable. But it makes sense to me to make all the amendments to the plan at the same time.
So I have to have the commissioners sign a contract for this one. So there's, I, I can't, I can't touch this until they've done that. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not asking, I'm not asking for a formal vote.
Yeah, we're not moving to amend the plan yet.
No, I just want you guys to to kind of, because this one, wherever early voting is in, in the county seat, I can't say wherever. This one needs to be, the, this is the main, this is, this has to be, there's gotta be a contract stating that this is an extension of the Circuit Court Clerk's office. So that's why I need the county attorney, I need the contract, and honestly, I need it close. And it's not far.
Yes.
So.
Good.
So that's, that's what I was saying. I don't.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's fine. It's, it's a different issue. I understand it's a different issue to amend the plan.
Yes.
Okay, great. So the commissioners will sign a contract including payment.
The, so again, Nate Laux is a wonderful, wonderful person.
He's not requesting payment. Okay, gotcha.
No, he's not requesting payment.
I understand. The contract is for the purpose of naming it an extension of your office.
So never have we paid for an early voting location.
Okay.
That's, that's just not typical. And that's why I was, as much as, you know, the Eighth Street thing is, it's not ideal. But when you have a zero budget for it, that's kind of what you work on, so.
So we may have an alternative in Michigan City that we're exploring. Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
So you just want support essentially?
Yeah, just a motion of support for, for the two ten Brighton is, that way if the commissioners do sign it, I don't want to come back to this board and you guys are like, yeah.
Yes, I understand.
I'll, I'll voice my support.
Thank you.
As will I.
Thank you. Okay.
So do you want, do you want to table the finality of this, of the locations then?
Yes.
Yes, so my understanding is we're, we're gonna make a hundred percent certain that, that Taylor is, has clarified and affirmed all of the early voting, or all of the vote center locations.
Yes.
And that we're still looking at uh, two to four early voting location sites.
Yep.
Which would be listed in um, three and four of the plan.
Yes.
Okay.
And when I get time, I am going to retype this plan and resubmit the whole thing. Because never did I realize that every page was page nine.
We're gonna have to amend it anyway.
There'll be other changes, so.
Yeah.
That'll work out. So is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote. Um, any other new business that I haven't discussed on this agenda? Do you believe that I've covered everything?
I do.
Okay, very well. Um, moving on to board member comments. Teresa, would you like to start?
Uh, I have been really heartened by the efforts of lots of people, uh, including those in the room who aren't up here, uh, to work on getting the best access we can for the voters of LaPorte County. So thank you for your work and we'll continue to do so. And we probably need to talk about another meeting date.
Are you finished?
I am.
I'm learning so much this year. Um, I have, this year, I'm learning a different side of elections. The, you know, the, the, the challenge process was incredible to me. The, the appeal process was incredible to me. It's a bit nerve wracking. And if I ever think that I know everything about elections, remind me how wrong I am. So it's, it's definitely been an interesting year already and it's only gonna keep getting better, so. I I appreciate patience everywhere. I think we all are like, there are times each one of us is like, wait, what does that mean? So I, I, it makes me not feel alone sitting up here with a couple of attorneys who kind of, you guys kind of get me when it comes to the legal stuff, so. So thank you, thank you for being patient and teaching me and it's been nice.
Um, my comment would just be, yeah, I am still learning every day. And that, that hearing yesterday was very informative. Um, I had, I mean, I had to go back and look at the last time that this was done in LaPorte County, and I think it was twenty fourteen. And I read that and it was just, wow. You know, you see all these statutes and how it's supposed to go, but then when you see it in action, it's a whole separate thing. And it was very, it was very cool to say, I mean, I don't know how else to put it, to see that in action. I am, I find myself thinking about the primary and look, really looking forward to it, like, oh man, I wish it was sooner. I'm, I'm very excited for that and to get this, this year going. Um, thank you both for your hard work and happy International Women's Day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.